Back there tonight, is it Pat?
Peterson.
Uh, John.
John?
John Peter, yep.
All right, welcome everyone to the September 16th, 2014 Shakopee City Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. Ms. Beckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tapke.
Here.
All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. McNeil.
Yes, Mayor, there is one regarding the County 16 Culvert Repair and Batumna's Trail Repair Cooperative Agreement, and that is proposed to be 10C1.
All right, thank you. Anything from council? Entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
Councilwoman Whiting, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilwoman Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business. Anything to remove or add to consent this evening? Councilwoman Lehman.
4A1 and 4D1.
So 4A1 and 4D1. Anything else? Councilwoman Mokel.
We need to remove F3.
F3?
Okay.
Mr. McNeil.
And F7, please.
And F7?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have four items to remove from consent 4A1, 4D1, 4F3, 4F7.
Everybody good?
Councilwoman Lehman.
Move the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilwoman Mokel. Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A1 was removed from consent agenda 4B1, authorizes purchase of a fire rescue airboat and trailer from Midwest Rescue Airboats for the amount of $155,119.45, and declares the fire department's existing 1999 airport airboat with trailer to be surplus property and authorizes proper sale or disposal of these items. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number 7477, declaring cost to be assessed, ordering the preparation of proposed assessments, and setting a public hearing date for October 21st for the East Industrial Sewer Improvements Project. 4C2 approves the SAC credit applications for Ziegler and Gavillon on the Shakopee East Industrial Sewer Project and approves waiving of the city's SAC fees. 4C3 adopts Resolution 7484, which orders a preliminary engineering report for the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project, authorizes the appropriate city officials to execute in agreement with ITCO Allied Engineering Company to perform soil borings, and authorizes the appropriate city officials to execute in agreement with WSB and Associates to perform engineering services. 4D1 was removed from consent agenda 4D2, authorizes the appropriate city officials to enter into health insurance contracts with Medica for the calendar year 2015, authorizes continuation of the current employer contribution percentages for next year, and also authorizes the city to increase benefits eligible employees' post-employment healthcare savings plan contribution by $10 per month per employee effective January 1st, 2015. 4D3 authorizes the city administrator entering into a separation agreement with a police department employee. 4E1 adopts Resolution 7486, authorizing the city to submit an application for Parks and Trail Legacy Grant for Quarry Lake Parks Project. 4E2 approves Parking Rec Advisory Board's recommendation that the city sell dog licenses that would include a fee for the use of the South Bridge Dog Park instead of an arrangement with the Three Rivers Park District, and also amending the dog park rules to require a city of Shakopee dog license at the park. 4F1 approves payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,589,126.56. 4F2 approves the minutes of the August 6th, 19th city council meetings as well as the September 2nd city council meeting. 4F3 was removed from consent agenda 4F4 approves amendments to Section 3.15 of the City Code Rules and Regulations relating to source separation, collection, disposal of refuse, bringing the City Code into compliance with new garbage and recycling container sizes. 4F5 authorizes a hire of Morris Leatherman to perform a community-wide survey at an amount not to exceed $22,000. 4F6 adopts ordinance Number 891, amending the City Code Regarding Tap Room and Small Brewer Regulations, and adopts ordinance 892, the official summary of 891, and 4F7 was removed from consent agenda.
Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Passes unanimously. Item five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. If there's anyone who has an item they'd like to discuss that is not on our agenda this evening, now is the time for that. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to Item 6A, Public Hearing for the Assessment Hearing on Delinquent Garbage Recycling Bills from Dick's Lakeville Sanitation, Inc., Resolution Number 7482. Councilwoman Lehman.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilwoman Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Looney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. This is our annual assessment hearing for delinquent garbage and recycling bills from Dick's Sanitation. This is the last time we will be doing it for Dick's Sanitation. We set out this process several months ago, giving several notifications of people that have unpaid bills, letting them know about the, if they don't pay their bills, that we would be assessing them. We sent out the proper notification. We put a list on your table. We wait as long as possible to finalize the list. We, at the previous council meeting when you did authorize the, the start of this hearing, we had 322 people who had not paid the bills. We're down to 246. And when you add in the administrative fees, acquire, associated with the assessing of these unpaid bills, total dollar amount is $55,301.21. With that, the list we have received, we are basically assessing, in this particular year, we're assessing every unpaid bill because it is Dick's last time of being a hauler for the city of Shakopee. I'll take any questions if you have. Any for me?
Councilwoman Lehman.
Mr. Looney, do we know if any of these are due to billing errors?
Or any what?
Due to billing errors.
I would not know that. We get the billing list from Dick's Sanitation. These are the unpaid bills. We're just, the assessing mechanism for them, because of our contract, says we will do the assessing of unpaid bills.
Okay, follow-up question, Mayor?
Yes.
If, if we find, if somebody comes forward between now and October 16th, I think the date was, and shows that there's a billing error, is the fees waived at that point?
Typically, yes.
Okay.
In the past years, we have done that.
All right. And have they all been notified?
Every one of these, by law, we have to notify these people. And we have notified them several times.
Anything else? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Ms. Lenahan. Oh, yeah, this is a public hearing. So now is the time, if anybody has anything they'd like to say regarding the delinquent garbage recycling bills, now is the time. So, sir, you have up to five minutes, and there's a, should be a sheet up there for you to sign your name and your address, please.
I'll be brief. I, I just want to commend everybody for, I don't know, I'm not into politics, but, and I know Shakopee is a, a town where there's one disposal company, and I'm just glad that you got rid of Dick's Sanitation, because I don't think they play fair. Because last year, I paid an exorbitant amount, and I didn't contest it, and I'm, I wasn't happy. But when things turned over and you got this new company, I thought, that's a good move. Because I, I think, I don't, I think Dick's Sanitation don't play fair. I think they're, I don't know, I just think they're cheaters. I'm sorry. That's just the way I feel. But I paid them off, and now I'm glad I'm rid of them. And I don't know. I usually try and stay out of this stuff, but I'm all thank everybody. I think you all did the right, made the right choice. And I don't know why you did it, but it happened, and it's a good thing.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that. Thank you, Julie.
My name's Ed Kennedy.
And your address, Ed?
113 Third Avenue, East.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, appreciate y'all.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I, I like Shakopee. I've been here since 1996, and it's cool.
We got that one on record. That's good. All right, anyone else like to talk with regard to the public hearing this evening? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Councilwoman Whiting.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilwoman Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Any, Councilwoman Whiting?
Offer Resolution Number 7482, a resolution adopting assessments for delinquent garbage bills and move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Second, my Councilwoman Lehman.
Yep.
Second. Discussion. I do have a question on this for council. There's a lot of stuff on here that's 20 bucks, 30 bucks, $28.70, those kinds of things. There are a lot of them on here. They're a lo, a fair amount of money. Does it make sense for us to be, like, this first one on the line here is $22.90 is their balance, and it's going to be $45. The city picks up for admin fees, and then the, that Dick's picks up for admin fees. Does that section below a certain threshold make sense to be including this process? Mr. McNeil.
Normally, we do not assess for anything less than $100 in this particular case, because it's the last time through for Dick's. We felt that we needed to assess anything. If someone had a disagreement, whether it was a $22 or whatever, they had ample opportunity to state their case. So at this point, I think for us to set anything other than just going for the whole amount would be setting a bad precedent.
Okay, thank you. I was just asking the question, because it kind of feels weird. Councilwoman Lehman.
Mayor, just to re-clarify, I, I asked Bruce Looney, but if they paid their 22 by October 15th or 16th, that dollar amount's not assessed. Is that correct?
Mr. Looney?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lehman, Councilwoman Lehman, what you asked me if there was an error. You didn't ask me if they, if you adopt the assessments tonight.
Right.
This is it, right?
This is it. You're adopting these assessments.
But doesn't this say they have until the 15th or 16th of October to pay it before it's finally turned over?
Without interest.
Yep.
But they do have the fees involved, because we've gone through the process up to this point. So the intent is to get them to pay by, in this case, it was September 15th yesterday, without the additional fees being placed by the city.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with that. It just felt weird, was all. So I just wanted to have that discussion. So any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 7, Business Removed From Consent Agenda. We will start with 4A1. Councilwoman Lehman.
Mayor, there was an update on the table tonight with a little bit of language change. And I thought it's probably worthwhile to have a brief overview so the public knows exactly what's going on in this topic. And then I do have a couple of questions for staff, so...
Mayor, members of the council, I can give you a brief overview. In May of this year, the Thrive MSP 2040 document, which is the core of the growth management strategy for the region under the Metropolitan Council, was adopted. They are now in the process of putting out for public comment two chapters of what will become the entire growth management document. The Transportation Policy Plan, which is that document which guides transit and road investments within the seven county region, and the Housing Policy Plan. The deadlines for those reviews come later this month, and I believe on October 1st, respectively. And so what we're proposing is that we comment on those plans. Public comment will be taken, as I understand it, from the Met Council website, only in writing. They will be holding a public hearing, but I don't think that they will be providing a written transcript of that public hearing, which is kind of an unusual process, but that's the way it appears from their, their website. With respect to the Transportation Policy Plan, it's sort of more of the same that we've seen in the past two, 10-year cycles, perhaps even more so. What the plan says is, number one, that we have a mature roadway system, and there are no major roadway investments planned in the seven county region. And what's really only called for is investment and maintenance and management of that existing roadway system. That's obviously a problem for those communities which in the growth document, the Thrive MSP document, were identified as suburban edge or emerging suburban edge or diversified rural. Because what it says is that there will be no significant roadway investments in those areas, which will have a long-term impact on the ability to grow within those areas. Just those designations alone had some impact in that the Thrive document said we are really only going to make investments in those communities we've called suburbs and the two core cities. And that's a limited number of communities within the metropolitan area. Shakopee, for example, was termed a suburban edge community. Prior Lake, just to our south, was deemed an emerging suburban edge community. Jackson Township, with which we have an orderly annexation agreement, because it doesn't have a staging plan for annexation, was called diversified rural. So through 2040, the Transportation Policy Plan posits that there will not be significant roadway investments. That's also important for transit, because the only transit that the plan calls for in our part of the world is bus transit, and bus transit runs on roadways. There are two scenarios that were analyzed for the Transportation Policy Plan. One is the current revenue model. That is, they've estimated what they think the revenue will be available for transit and roadway purposes. And then they did an analysis of what they called an enhanced revenue model that says, my words, not theirs, "If money falls from the sky, what else would we do?" Well, the interesting thing about those two scenarios is that when they adopt the Transportation Policy Plan in October, the only analysis that gets adopted is the current revenue plan, not the enhanced revenue plan. And that current revenue plan does not show any transit ways in Shakopee or Scott County. There's only transit investment in their plans if you have a transit way identified. That is very problematic for Scott County and for Shakopee. The Housing Policy Plan is also being uniquely tied into the Transportation Policy Plan. Let me back up. One structural thing about the Transportation Policy Plan, if you heard any of the Met Council's presentations, you heard them say that the roughly 270-page document, good bedtime reading if you're an insomniac like me, was broken up into several different chapters, so you didn't have to read it all if you were a particular audience. I always find that a little disconcerting, because I think you need to read the entire document to know what's going on. But one of the things that's going on simultaneously with the review of the Transportation Policy Plan is the development of the regional solicitation for projects for funding. And that regional solicitation, and Mr. Looney could speak to it more eloquently than I can, perhaps, posits that investment or projects will be scored not only on the typical kinds of criteria you would expect, but also on whether or not they will benefit areas of concentrated poverty in the region. They call it equity scoring, and I forget the exact number count. It's either 10 or 15 points assigned to equity in the draft solicitation criteria. That means that communities that have areas of concentrated poverty in the region will score much more heavily than other regions. And those are relatively limited areas within the Twin Cities, again, within the core communities and some of the close-in suburbs. What I think will be the result, and it's the subject of the language that was on the table, is that there will be significant geographic inequity in deciding what projects are going to be funded under the current regional solicitation and the ones that follow, if they use their criteria. Now, to the Housing Policy Plan, if you've taken a look at it, it does two basic things. It says that you ought be engaging in building greater density and more affordable housing. And by the way, as cities in the region, you should be more aggressively managing the existing housing stock. They call it naturally occurring affordable housing. And there's an interesting discussion we had at Metro Cities about what that terminology really means. But it doesn't provide resources for doing that. And as I've said, the Transportation Policy Plan essentially says if you're a suburban edge or emerging suburban edge community, you're not going to get transit investment, so you're not going to get additional opportunities for mobility for the populations that you might want to provide that housing for. And they are planning on using the Housing Policy Plan intrinsically with the regional solicitation. Housing is not a regional system. Transportation is. It's one of the four regional systems. But it, it appears that what they're trying to do is make it so intrinsic to transportation and the other regional systems that when it comes time to do the city's comprehensive plans, they're doing 2018. And when the systems statements come out in 2015 or 2016, they will have set specific housing goals that your plan will essentially have to meet in order for your plan to be approved by the Metropolitan Council. If you look at the Housing Policy Plan, there's a renewed emphasis on two things. It is the definition of a number for each community of an allocation of the regional affordable housing need. Problem is, while there is a general methodology that's been talked about, there has been no beta testing of that methodology, no running of what the numbers would look like. So we're being asked to comment on the Housing Policy Plan without knowing what the allocation of regional affordable housing will be for each of the cities and counties in the region. The other is a, an affordable housing goal, and there's renewed emphasis on that. We used to have here in Shakopee, as did other communities, Housing Affordability Plan that stated those numbers, and they are tied to metropolitan funding that might be available to you. So if you don't achieve a good enough score in seeing the production of affordable housing, that may mean that a community is not eligible for regional funds for transportation or other projects. I hope that helps as an overview.
Matt?
Mayor, I just, I've said it in the past, and I guess I'll say it again, but once again, this is, in my opinion, prime example of the Met Council not being a very good dancing partner with the city of Shakopee. In a nutshell, when I read the whole document, what I walked away with was the Met Council basically saying, "If you don't do this, we're going to do this." It's blackmail, basically, in a nutshell, in my eyes. We're, we're going to not give you transportation dollars if you don't meet our affordable housing "We're, we're gonna not give you transportation dollars if you don't meet our affordable housing model, per se." And in the same token, a lot of our older homes from First Avenue to 10th are affordable housing. Their policy wants to implement a home inspection program where the city has to hire a bunch of inspectors and try to violate individuals' personal privacy by inspecting their private property internally just to make sure your quality of life is to their expectation, which, uh, costs money, which makes property taxes go up, which makes the housing stock unaffordable. So, um, it's no surprise to me that the Met Council is way out there in la-la land, as usual. This group is, should be abolished and started over with representation from the individual counties. We've said that for years, proof is in the pudding. I've got to commend staff for writing a pretty nice, uh, letter. And, uh, it's unbelievable what various people in our government think they can do.
Councilor Lehman, members of the council, I might add a couple of things. This year is, I think, a little bit unique in that I think there is greater interest in the part of metropolitan cities and counties than there have been in the process that's been followed here and what's being attempted. Um, you may be aware that the five now-termed collar counties, not Hennepin and Ramsey, are going to be meeting with the Metropolitan Council because they have the same kinds of concerns, um, that are addressed in the letter that I drafted to you. Suburban Transit Association has put together a letter that's under review for that purpose. Uh, Scale has taken a look at doing, um, a joint response, especially as it relates to transportation. So there's an awful lot of interest, where in the past cycle, there were some, um, arrangements made that caused some counties and cities to sort of back away from their concerns. I don't think that's happening now. And part of the problem is just the shortness of the process by which they're doing all of these things at the same time. At Metro Cities, we had a special meeting, and there's a letter going out from them that says, "How do you adopt a housing policy plan, for example, if communities can't look at what the allocation of need and, and goals for housing are going to be?" Um, and there are communities that are fully developed that were a part of that meeting that are as concerned as we are, because they do have some of those areas in there. Minneapolis, I think, their goal would go up by about double, as it was expressed at that meeting. And they're trying to figure out, "Where do we accommodate the additional housing?"
Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, could you comment? Wasn't there, uh, something on the shortness of the process, like you mentioned, that
Yes.
they're gonna adopt this before all the comments are even in, or?
Well, they will wait until after the public hearing and the comment deadline to adopt it. But what has been the past practice, and looks like it will be so now, they're proposing adoption, as I recall in October, of these two policy plans, is that the response to the comments they get, and I would imagine they'll be fairly voluminous, will likely largely be, "Yep, we got your comment, we don't think a response is needed, we think it's addressed in the policy plan." And as I said, with respect to housing, um, the numbers that they're talking about just are not a part of that process and won't be until after the adoption. On the transportation side, they're moving forward with the regional solicitation, assuming that they will be using, um, points for equity before the adoption of these two documents. So yes, it is very much the process they put together, and the explanation I've heard in two meetings now is, "It just kind of worked out that way, and we're doing the best we can." I'm not sure everyone thinks that, that's an adequate answer. I know I don't personally.
If I can add, I, I do like the comments you've made, and, uh, appreciate that.
Thank you for that. We try.
Anything further? Councilor Whiting?
I'll approve this, uh, make a motion to approve the submission of the attached comment letter to the Metropolitan Council.
As amended.
As amended. Oh.
As amended. Okay, sorry, yes, as amended.
Second, as amended, and, uh, make sure it's in our official public record.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Next one, uh, off the consent is, uh, four D one, non-union pay plan amendment. Councilor Lehman, you took this one off?
I did. I'm, uh, okay with the yearly, uh, increase. I don't agree with the philosophy of going out to look to see if somebody's getting paid more somewhere else and then raising it above that. I just don't agree with that philosophy.
All right, any discussion? We have a motion? Anyone? Four D one. Councilor Whiting?
I'll make the motion to, uh, for a resolution 7485, a resolution amending resolution number 7393, a resolution adopting the 24, 2014 pay plan for certain non-union employees of the city of Shakopee and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Send me, Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Councilor Lehman?
So what this basically means is that our jobs pay grade system that we currently have is null and void, because now, whenever somebody's due for a pay, a, a grade increase, we'll just go out and search around and see if anybody's paying that position more, and then we'll just match it, and our pay grade system is just, I don't know what's there. We'll just take every position when it comes up for annual, uh, grade, uh, step increase. We'll just go out in the open market, see who's paying the most, and say, "That's what you get."
Mr. McNeil?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Lehman, I understand the concern on this. Um, as we've talked in the past, public sector pay is something which we do have to report for pay equity purposes. There is an internal and an external consideration on that. Certainly, we, uh, don't want to be overpaying or being on the cutting edge of some of our positions or, or any of our positions. And, uh, in this case, however, with firefighters, we knew when the position was created a year ago that we were going to be low, as we did the, uh, further explanation, exploration comparing to other, uh, cities. Uh, we found that we were significantly low. We do want to be competitive on that. For that reason, the recommendation is to add, uh, or increase it by one pay grade. Uh, in short term, that doesn't do anything, basically, when they reach a top step. In five years, they will have an extra step to progress to. Um, I understand what you're saying. It is not something that we take lightly, and we have to make sure that we don't get out of line with our internal comparisons as well.
Councilor Lehman?
Does that, uh, same rationale apply to our paid-on-call firefighters?
Paid-on-call firefighters have a couple of variations on it. One, it's the hourly rate, and then there's also a pension involved with that. But yes, they very much look at who else is being paid what, and that's one of the reasons why you have in your budget for next year, um, and a recommended adjustment for them as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, motion on the table, uh, seeing no more discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one, with Councilor Lehman in dissent. Item four F three, approval of massage therapist license, uh, not going to go through the names. Uh, Ms. Mokel?
I just need to re- abstain.
Oh, okay, um, need a motion? Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the applications and grant, uh, massage therapist license to, uh, Kevin Sheeda.
Ji Jao.
Ji Jao and, uh, Renee Walker.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Send me, Councilor Lou, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstention. Councilor Mokel, so passes four to zero with Councilor Mokel abstaining. Uh, now we move on to four F seven, amendments to 2014 fee schedule. Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of reasons to have removed this one, just from a timing standpoint. You earlier acted on the, uh, dog park license. We wanted to make sure that that happened first before you actually adjusted the fee to that. Um, secondly, one of the items on there is there is a question that was raised, uh, since the pack went out regarding whether the $25 per hour park cleanup fee was adequate to cover the city costs on that. And speaking with, uh, Ms. Polly, we felt that this is something that we could defer as the season has pretty much wound down now. We will look at this and bring back whether it's a hourly fee or whether it's a damage deposit or something like that, and that will be part of your 2015, uh, fee proposal. So with that, recommendations are two, one, to establish a taproom license and a small brewer license fee. And then secondly, would be to approve the dog license at $25 annually.
All right, do we have that in form of a motion? Councilor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the amendments as presented, noting that, uh, the park cleanup fee is going to be, uh, deferred to a later date.
All right, very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Send me, Councilor Lou, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are through the consent business. Go us. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number eight, recess for economic development authority meeting. Entertain a motion to recess. Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to recess to the economic development authority meeting.
Councilor Mokel?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, we are now in the EDA meeting. President Lehman?
All right, what do we've got here? September 16th, 2014, Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting, call the order. Secretary, please note the roll.
Yes, Mr. President?
Can this should be in front of you all? Consent, EDA minutes, bill list, general. Is there a motion, Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mokel, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, consent agenda. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tabkey, motion by Whiting, second by Tabkey. That's going to include our minutes, bill list. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item four A. It's a resolution authorizing the establishment about policy and procedures for commercial exterior improvement program. And that will be Ms. DiMaggio.
Hello, good evening. Since tonight I'm bringing forward a formal proposal for some changes to our commercial exterior improvement program. Last time this program was modified by you was on October 1st, 2013. I know that we have some new people here, so I think this is definitely a good time to bring this forward, and I've made some modifications to it. The eligible expenses will remain the same as we had them before. A lot of this in the past has been anything that is visible from the outside. I think you've also taken into consideration things that need to be done, such as electrical work, that maybe you can't necessarily see it from the outside, but those repairs need to be done in order for things on the inside to be fixed. But for the most part, this program is for things on the outside, such as the roofs, the windows, the doors, siding, brick repair, removal of blight from the property, painting, lighting, signage, awning, and restoration of the historic detail. Our new policy talks about what our intent is. One thing that I did not see formally was a year. So what I've added into this policy was that these would include buildings only built after 1980. And it was a little bit painful for me, because I remember the eighties. Yes, Mr. Tabkey?
Sorry, you said after, and I think you meant prior.
Prior, night, uh, thank you. I'm glad you caught that right away. I was just so set on the eighties, I said that wrong, but, um, built prior to 1980. So that was 34 years ago, as I figured out today, 34 years ago. So that is something, though, that date is up for consideration. If you would like to modify that, I've underlined it, so you can take a look at it and let me know if there's a date that you would recommend different from that. I don't know if you want to go through these point by point, or if you want me to go through all of it first and then stop back?
Um, how about we take any questions that we might have, and maybe that'll go into areas that people might have concerns with? Is there any questions? Okay, I'll start. Is there a maximum dollar amount?
Do you want me to keep going?
If you can just answer a couple of questions, that'd be fine.
I have an entire presentation, so it will get to that.
If you want to dance, that's, that's good.
Sure. So the city will stay at a 50/50 match, that, that you will pay no more than 50% of the total project costs. The term of the loan shall not exceed 20 years. Forgiveness on a five-year loan would be amortized over 20% per year. I'm assuming if you were to do a 20-year loan, you would forgive, you know, 5% per year, whatever it may be, to get to that number, so you'd have the whole amount forgiven. One thing that unfortunately the EDAC and I did not agree on was a chart. I know this is something that you've asked me for in the past, so I threw it back in here. With the maximum award being $100,000, and the maximum years being 20 years. So if you were to get $25,000, it would be a five-year term. If you sold your building within five years, you would have the right to ask them to repay those funds. As it says here on the next page, if the building is sold, they could come to you and ask that either they could be transferred onto the new owner, or there'd be repayment, whatever you would find mutually agreeable. The applicant has one year from the award date to complete the project and request any payment from you. If they don't start the project, if they don't complete it, two years down the road, unfortunately, our agreement with them would be null and void. They have one year to complete it and request repayment. So how it would work out is that applications would be submitted to me by the building owner. They would have to have at least two bids for this. We would assume that they would go with the lowest bid. Funds for this program are limited and will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. I think there's some people saying, "Should we make it more competitive? Should we save some of it?" I think that was something that was tried in the past, and unfortunately, I don't know that it worked out the best for us, because I just spent last year's $150,000. So I think as town is growing right now, we should definitely keep using these while we have the momentum and people looking to fix up their buildings. Right now, I do have a committee that reviews the applications. It's made up of a member of the EDAC, Angie from the Chamber, and then Marty Barans, who is previously on the Historical Society, or I think it was the Historical Preservation Committee that we had here through the city. That's something, though, that we've also discussed. I, if you'd prefer that I bring it to the formal EDAC instead of the side committee, that's something that could be added, or we could continue to bring it to that committee. They would, along with myself, we'd make a recommendation to you. You would then decide if it was a project that you'd want to fund or not. Do you have any comments or questions?
Questions? The maximum amount is $100,000. Where's the funds come from?
These funds do come from the general fund. They're given to the EDAC. We used those funds last year. We had $150,000. We were, our idea was to use $50,000 for this program, $25,000 for the Main Street program, and $75,000, we were going to set up a low-interest revolving loan fund. Unfortunately, we have not had anyone come to us asking for those revolving loan funds, so we've put them back to be used for the facade. If we did have someone else come, we could definitely move them back over. But as of right now, I've not had anyone ask for any low-interest loans.
Okay, so we're basically collecting tax dollars from the general population and giving them to businesses to fix up their buildings. What do we have available for the residential properties that can't afford to fix up their residence?
The city of Shakopee did have a pool of money that they received from the state of Minnesota. They had some HUD funds that were given. Those are, were available, I think there's a balance in that account right now of less than $5,000. So those funds were given out. It was based, I believe, on income. I think Carver County managed it for us. We had approximately $20,000 at one time, we're down to $5,000. So there were funds available. If that's a concern that you have, I think that we could work with the CDA and try to find more of those housing. That's been one thing that's been talked about, and it came up during our 101 corridor study, that we really should find some funds to help fix up the stock around our downtown area and our, our corridor area. So I definitely think that's something that we may want to consider in the future.
My concern is that tonight, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of requests here, and this money is coming out of the general fund, so the average taxpayer is funding this. And, you know, if they're a struggling household, they probably can't afford to fund this. They can't afford their own housing needs and improvements, let alone somebody else's business improvements. So I'm a little bit leery from that standpoint. I think $100,000 is quite a, quite a bit. And, uh, especially for no repayment at all. Mr. Tabkey, any question?
Um, I was going to say it with regard to your residential question that you had before. That's one of the things we discussed in the budget for 2015, was a program to explore a program for residential, uh, historic, um, renovations and helping people, uh, with the older housing stock, just like you said, for pulling those together. So I think that's a, a totally separate topic that's being addressed in a different.
Well, any, anytime you add something to the general tax levy, you raise the levy, which makes the taxes more expensive, which takes disposable income out of their pocket, which means there's less for them to use at these businesses. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. At some point, you've got the disposable income coming out of the residential pockets, um, that could be spent at these businesses, and now they can't spend it at the businesses, because they're paying taxes with it to fund the improvements, and, uh, then the businesses can't continue, so.
Oddly enough, a majority of these businesses that we've been assisting with have been vacant. Oddly enough, a majority of these businesses that we've been assisting with have been vacant buildings, therefore creating no jobs. I think if you were to ask the people who have been beneficiaries of these loans within the past few months, we've already seen businesses opening back up. There's some businesses here tonight who I think have seen an increase in traffic in their businesses because of the buildings that were fixed up. So I guess I see your point, but I hope that you also see mine, and, you know, I think that that's something that we have to deal with.
Mr. Wyding?
Would you say that after these buildings are fixed up, we have a few examples in town, that their value, their market value goes up?
Definitely, and you can see on the chart, it's probably hard for the people at home to see, but that is something that I'm tracking, is what their original taxable value was on the properties. And as soon as they come, they become finished, we'll also track then what their, their new values would be.
So they'd be adding more back into the tax base by being taxed more for a better, more valuable building?
And you look at somebody such as Ford of Journey, as I said, they had no employees before. They now have for sure three employees in town, if not more. I think that the generated, the income that's being generated from that, plus people coming to that building and stopping into other buildings now to eat or to walk around, I think that there, there is something that goes along with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One follow-up. Do you believe that when one of these buildings is fixed up, that the other buildings around it fix them, get fixed up also? Do you think they're looking at some of these programs and trying to enhance their buildings too?
I do. I don't want to say any names on camera, but I was lucky enough to have a business owner call me. He owns a strip mall near Marshall Road. He did some repairs to it, and some of the other businesses in the neighborhood have now been calling around to find out who did those repairs. They would like to spruce up their businesses, and that's exactly what we want to have happen. As soon as people start cleaning up their area, we get more people coming, more stores open, the demand for those properties goes up. That's exactly why we're doing this program, is to get people back into these areas, rejuvenate them, create more opportunities for our community.
I don't necessarily think that we need to debate the merits of the program, and I think that everybody in the community can see that the program has, is working and doing a great job. I'd like to talk about a couple of the details and points within. First one is the process portion of it, the committee, the exterior committee. I don't know if it's necessary to have a secondary committee for it. I would like to see it just as the Economic Development Advisory Committee, because they're very close in understanding what we're doing. And so I was going to ask the EDA what we think about that, if it's something that we, we put, we set it up separately. Not entirely sure why we did that, just to get a more, a broader look across the community for that. But I think it very much fits within what EDAC does, and we like to put it there. So there's that point. And then my second concern with it is taking it, a lot along the similar lines that Matt's concerned about, about having a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know, I'm having a hard time articulating exactly what I think, because it's a lot of money. And if it's, if we don't know, let's say we've got, well, for next year, we're putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right, into the program. If it's not a specific time period where people are able to apply, or, or whatever it is, we could have a great program that comes along, a great opportunity, like we're going to talk about tonight, that comes along, and we put a hundred thousand dollars into that, and then at the end of the year, in, we'll say August or September, after that money is gone, if we spent it on one or two projects, then coming back, we're not going to have the money to continue to do the really great projects. And so I don't know if it would make sense to have a, a certain timeframe, like we, we do this January, February, March each year. They need to be in by March thirty-first, or whatever it would be, so that we know what pool gets to be chosen from. Because I mean, the best opportunities we have for this is if it is coveted money, and that there's, people really want to utilize this to make their businesses better. And I think that if we leave that very open-ended, we might put our investment into something that could have been better used in a different way. So I'm just curious as to what council thinks about those a couple of things.
I don't agree with that part of the deal, because we would lose the opportunity that we're going to have tonight to take care of a building that is in dire need. This person would not wait until January, February, or March. So I think we need to leave it year-round. And, you know, this is a special issue, the one tonight. It's something we need to get taken care of. It's affecting the whole downtown. It's dragging everything down. I stopped at the county assessor and talked to them about the tax situation on it. And when they improve the building, we will receive our money back through taxes and then some.
And I'm, I'm just concerned about the policy. I'm not concerned about the specific things that are in front of us for the rest of the night, tonight, because I agree with you that it's a very good project. I'm just concerned about the policy and having it set up for moving forward.
Let's take the two issues that Mr. Tabkey brought up, and, and just one at a time and deal with them. The first one was, do we want to delegate the individual projects to the advisory board? At first blush, I would say that there's an element of politics within the advisory board, as is there is this body. The difference being that this body has a recourse of accountability to the voters, where that body does not. So that would be my comment on that. The second one, there's some merit, I think, to what he's saying. If you're going to do this, you should have a time window when all the projects have to be submitted, and then they can be ranked, so to speak, because there's only so much money. And you try to figure out where you can get your biggest bang for the buck. Otherwise, you're going to have projects coming in throughout the year with no money available, and you're losing them projects. So everybody's thoughts? Mr. Wyding?
To speak on the first point, I had been part of the advisory group with the Historic Preservation Group before the EDAC. I think it preceded that group, so I like the idea that it has that element, back when that whole program was more had a historical slant and tried to fix up the historical buildings. On the other part of it, I do, I am concerned that, you know, these are timely issues, and the issue we've had in the past is that we couldn't spend the money. I mean, nobody wanted the money. They probably wanted it, but they didn't apply for it. We had it. We had it sitting here. And when they do come up, it's a timely issue, so if something comes up in February, well, we just spent the money in January to pick a month. I'd be concerned, because some of these are, are hot issues. You know, you never know what might come up. So pegging it, I think, to a certain timeframe is, is concerning. Giving it to the EDAC, I guess I'm indifferent on that. I go either way.
I say leave it to one committee for the first part, and then the second part, I don't think it should have the timeframe, because I think you're, again, you're going to miss opportunities that are later on in the year, that want to get projects done before the January and February.
So what do we, let's say it's January thirtieth, we get a project that wants, that wants a hundred thousand dollars. There's a hundred and fifty in the account. That project moves forward. February second, you get another project for fifty. Your funding is gone, and now you get projects throughout the rest of the year that, that, do you just put them on a shelf and wait until next year? Or what do you do, Mr. Lewis?
We all have to agree that giving someone a hundred thousand dollars isn't going to come up very often. You know, all of the amounts we've been giving out have been considerably smaller. So, you know, the hundred thousand could be broken up four times in previous loans. This is an extreme situation, and I doubt that we'll see another one of these in my turn.
I would tend to think that once you start handing out a hundred thousand dollar bills with no strings attached for a couple of years, or very few strings attached, I should say, I, I don't know why the whole downtown wouldn't line up for their hundred thousand dollars too.
Because you're talking twenty years. Not many business owners are going to commit to twenty years. They just aren't.
Well, let's see, Ryer's been here for twenty years, Turtles.
Let's put it this way, Ryer's not going to be coming for a facade.
I don't know why not.
One thing that I, I don't want to interrupt you, because I think your discussion is fabulous, but one thing I want to point out is it does say in here, this is just a guideline. It is at your discretion at any time to choose to give any amount. Another thing to remember is that the person has to have a fifty percent match. So I wouldn't say that that is, as Mr. Lewis had said, a commonality, that we have a ton of people coming with over that amount that want to invest that amount. So please know that they have some, their own skin in the game as well. And so another option that you could do is make it a part of a forgivable loan, or a loan, not a forgivable loan, but a loan at low interest. Say, fine, we'll give you this money at a one percent interest, you know, compounded monthly, or something like that. We could definitely do that as well. So I don't know if that's something you want to go forward with in the future. It's, it's up to you.
So in this policy, the at our discretion would be the EDA's discretion?
Definitely, it would be at your discretion.
So we wouldn't be delegating that portion of it to the advisory group?
No, they would just make a recommendation to you, similar to what the committee makes now.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Taking into consideration the one we're doing tonight, being it's so large, they are also putting in three times the amount that we are giving them, which I do believe is called skin in the game.
Well, we're going to ask them some questions when they're up for their turn, you know, how long they've owned a building, if they have a tenant lined up, these types of questions.
But we could set the guidelines to where, if they go to the hundred thousand, they have to put in a bigger percentage than fifty percent.
We could do that. I'm surprised that we didn't do like the state did with housing, look at income disparity to see if they're qualifying these types of things. But anyway, Mr. Tabkey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my first point with using the EDAC is simply to save Sam a step. And it seems cleaner to me, so that's, whatever works, works on that side. And then with the, with having a timeframe for using, for submitting applications for this, if all the money is not used, then it would, you could use it whenever I, I would think, throughout the year. My concern is, and I've, I think this should be more, the money can be utilized better as we move forward, like as we continue to work on downtown projects and the city investing, if it goes the way that I hope that it goes, significant amounts of money in the streetscapes and the, the different projects in the downtown corridor. That will therefore incentivize people to start using this program a lot more, not only just in the core downtown area that we're talking about right now, but all the way up and down First Avenue, four buildings that were built before nineteen eighty. I mean, that, I, I just want to make sure that we are using this money in the best possible way moving forward that we can to get the improvements that we're looking for for the community.
I would, I would say that if the, if the cap was twenty-five thousand dollars per project, that the time issue wouldn't be there, you know, because you'd be able to do so many projects throughout the course of the year, but because the cap is so high and the dollar amount is, is fixed, you know, you're creating a situation where one project shuts you down for the rest of the year, if you accept that project.
That's a key phrase, if you accept that project.
Right.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wyding?
One comment. We could add language into the policy that says, you know, that this level is, is held at more of an extreme need or value to the community or something like that. So that we have stated in there that it's only used in certain circumstances. So it's not like a hundred thousand dollar checks are every time, one project a year gets the big money, you know?
You don't?
Yeah.
The other thing I didn't see in the policy was ones per property per year, or something like that.
Definitely, I think that's something that you could add. I would, it'd be my recommendation to you to tell somebody, well, they have an open award, so if their term is still open, if they have a seven-year term, and they're still in that term, I would tell them, you cannot apply for another one until your term has been finalized, or something like that. I think that there is some concern about frequent flyers and people who, you know, continually use it, and new people don't get a chance to use it. So I would tell someone, if you have an open term right now, or, you know, your twenty-year term is still going on, or your five-year term is still going on, that is not something that you would consider.
So do we?
Add that language?
Send us back for changes, or?
Well, Mr. Chair, one suggestion, because I think Sam's looking for some direction here, is maybe take these issues one at a time and just vote on them. I mean, somebody make a motion to, to use the EDAC rather than the current committee as a recommended body, and see where the votes are. And then they can make a motion to whether or not to have a sliding scale, see where it comes down, and then Sam has the direction she needs from there.
And Mr. Thompson, if there was something they wanted to add, they could add, adopt the resolution and add that to the policy all at the same time. So I think we could take care of it tonight.
All right. Mr. Tabkey?
I will just make a motion to, for resolution number twenty, two thousand fourteen dash four, resolution authorizing the establishment of a policy and procedures for the commercial exterior improvement program as it is presented.
Second.
Okay, so how are we going to amend it?
Chair, someone would have to make a motion to amend it. As I understand the motion, it's, as it's before you now, so if somebody wants to change something, you'd have to make a motion to amend it.
Okay, is there any that wants to entertain an amendment to the motion to make any changes?
Depends on what the amendment would be.
Well, one, one amendment would be to have a no frequent flyer type clause, where if you're currently utilizing the program, you're not eligible to reapply over the course of your term.
I will not accept that amendment for the reason of that I want people to utilize this program. So if they use it for improving their signage, or whatever it is, or replacing windows, and two years later, what's still during the term of this program, their roof goes out, we still want that roof to be maintained historically and take care of it the way it's supposed to, which that's a bad example, but I don't want to limit people from doing that. I would be willing to entertain a, a, a cap, which this is set up as a hundred thousand dollars for the cap. I would be very willing to do that. I don't know how that would look, but I'm.
A cap of a different amount? Or this is already capped at a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Wyding?
I will try an amendment that states, adds language that states that anybody that has an outstanding balance cannot exceed one hundred thousand dollars in multiple years, and we'll start with that amendment.
Okay, is that a friendly, is that amendment acceptable to the motion maker in the second here?
Mr. Chair, I, my recommendation is, friendly amendments are only when the motioner wants to make it. Any, any EDA member has a right to make a motion to amend what's before you, and it needs to be second, and it would need to be voted on.
So if there's a second on his amendment, then that's the motion?
That's amending the main motion, that's correct.
Is there a second to the motion? Well, I'll second it for discussion.
So the point is, though, if you had a hundred thousand dollars and you had paid it back over five years, assuming you, you had, had been relieved twenty-five thousand dollars as it reduces, you'd still have access to another twenty-five thousand dollars in a future cycle of this.
And I don't understand why we would want to put ourselves in a position to take total ownership of a property. I mean, in theory, you could come in, get a hundred thousand dollars, pay it down twenty-five, get another twenty-five, put another twenty-five into it, and just keep going, and pretty soon the city's got five hundred thousand dollars into this building, and Grandma's now losing her house because her property taxes are too high.
Can I add something, please?
Sure.
The state of Minnesota has a similar program that they run, or some legislation for a program that they run. They say at some point, they will not give you a loan to value higher than what the property is worth. So that might also be a recommendation to you, saying, hey, if your property is only worth ten thousand dollars, you know, at some point, you have to say, we don't want to give you a certain amount. Or if that value, let's say, we were to have the appraiser check a building, and they say, in the end, we think this building will be worth four hundred thousand dollars, then you could make that decision to say, hey, that's great, then we'll give you half of that amount, or eighty percent of that amount, or whatever the final building value will be worth, but that you'll have a loan-to-value ratio of some sort, which might sound confusing, but I think what you're trying to avoid is somebody taking a building that they can put a ton of money into that still won't have any value in the end.
Mr. Lewis?
I think we're faced with that. I think we're faced with that exact problem tonight. Down the road here.
Well, I'm still trying to figure out where it became government's responsibility to fix private property up. I guess I'm way back at the beginning here, but that's just me. I'm old school. Anybody else? Mr. Lewis?
I don't agree with having the, it's basically a revolving checking account. If they pay down 25, they can come and get 25. Cap is a cap. Cap is at a hundred. You don't go over that as long as you own the building.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second, so...
Do we have a second?
Yes.
You did second.
Is there any other discussion?
Could we clarify then what it is that you're voting on? Okay. It's $100,000. If you're over that, you would not qualify for anything additional. If you are under that amount, you could qualify for a loan to bring it back up to 100,000. Is that the understanding?
That's the understanding, except, um, I'm gonna withdraw my second because, uh, now you're over the $100,000, and I don't agree with that either. I wanted to get the discussion out there, and there wasn't a second, so. We're back to the original motion, which is to accept the policy as stated. And then we're gonna have to come back and clarify all the bits and pieces as we go. Mr. Whiting?
Well, we'll try an amendment, uh, that the use of the hundred thousand dollar level of, of loan in this program is only used in extreme cases, and only when it's of great public benefit. That kinda language in there.
Can you define public benefit?
Well, that's true.
In extreme cases.
Exactly.
Well, I think it's a rare...
I think it's, it's still...
Are you trying to get at just a hundred thousand dollars at, at one single time?
I don't think we need to, to go a hundred thousand dollars on, on, on a regular basis. I think that should be only used in, in a time when, when there is a situation like, uh, Mr. Lewis has been talking about. And a lot of these big, big buildings could, could use up a hundred thousand dollars easily. And we'd be banking that, or it'd be a $200,000 project, and we'd be bankrolling half of it. I just think that this isn't necessary to be, to be using. The idea of this is to help people fix up their buildings. It's not to be putting out a hundred thousand dollars all the time, because that would bankrupt the program.
Right. Mr. Lewis?
I don't believe the project or the policy here is to help people bankroll their buildings. It's to help the downtown and the city survive. If they can't put the money in, somebody has to help them out. Otherwise, these buildings will end up like some of them have been already.
But you have a broader question, because if you, if the city steps in and rebuilds all the buildings down here for, I don't know, let's say, 20 million dollars, the average consumer is no longer able to have the resources to patronize these businesses, because you've now took their, their dollars out of their pocket that they use for consumerism.
Correct.
So...
Yes, we're not talking 20 million dollars.
But is it more important then to send them to, across the river to shop and eat and everything else? Does that make sense either?
Well, it makes as much sense as expecting an individual to maintain their own private property. We expect it out of them at their house. As a matter of fact, we have codes that require a certain level of property maintenance. And we're doing the exact opposite for private business. Mr. Tabkey?
Mr. President, I'd like to call a question.
Okay. Motion to call a question, so there's no more debate on the question, and the, the motion in front of us is to...
Mr. Mr. President, you need a second on that motion. You need a vote on the motion to whether or not to call the question.
We need a second on the motion to call a question.
Right, and you need a vote on that.
Motion to call a question is non-debatable, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. So, now we're to the main motion?
Two negatives.
Uh, Whiting and Lehman in the negative. So, the motion on the table now is to adopt the policy as drafted, as, uh, reviewed from staff.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think you all understand this, but just to be clear, the hundred thousand is just a cap. In other words, it's, you can't apply for the program if you ask for more than a hundred. But just because someone asked for a hundred doesn't mean you have to give it to them when they submit an individual application. So, it's not a, it's not a, a, um, a mandate that they're going to get it. It just means they're eligible and can submit an application for your review.
And attorney, as this is, document is, is drafted, it also means that if you apply for 99.9 and receive it, there's nothing to stop you from applying for another 99.9 next year.
The only thing, that's correct. The only thing that would stop you is the amount of funding you put into the program. If there's no funding left because you've used, it's only $150,000, so if you've used all the funds up, there's no funds available, so...
Or at your discretion, you could say, "We saw you last year." It's council's discretion that we don't feel that we should issue another one. That's always based on your discretion, or the EDA's discretion.
Uh, any other discussion? Sensing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Four to one with Lehman in dissent. Item number 4B, consideration of a commercial exterior improvement program loan for the Scott County Development Agency, CDA. Mr. DiMaggio?
Thank you. The CDA is requesting funds from the Commercial Exterior Improvement Program. I've started off with some pictures of the building. They are requesting the improvements at River City Center. You can see, as I go scroll through some of the pictures, some of the work that needs to be done on the building would be brick repair. They plan on painting the building. They plan on replacing the awnings to the building. As I go through it, this building is approximately 16 years old. Here's a picture of what they hope the building will look like after it's done. As you can see, they've changed the color of the paint from a cream to a burgundy color. They've updated the awnings. I was unsure about this point, but it looks like the awnings now go all the way down to the end of the building, so I don't know if it's their intention to add some awnings or not. They initially requested $60,000. After the review committee looked at it, they are recommending to you $15,000. Some of the repairs that need to be done don't fit into the typical spectrum. Some of them were elevator repairs, things like that. The lowest estimate that they got was $420,000. The eligible expenses that they thought were eligible would be the purchase and installation of new awnings and some brick restoration and repair. Unfortunately, it wasn't broke down specifically as to what would fall into what. So, as I said, based on that, they did offer $15,000. It now comes to you to decide if that's something that you would like to award or not.
Okay, Mr. Whiting?
After our last, uh, discussion, isn't this project moot because it's not old enough?
I would think so, but as Mr. McNeil and I discussed, they did make application prior to you doing this, so I don't know, Mr. Thompson, if we have to consider it, or if we could say that this project isn't eligible based on the policy just passed.
Um, Mr. Chair, now, if the board believes that this one should qualify because it predated the policy that's completely up to the discretion of the board?
Mr. Whiting?
Here, here's the problem I have with this one is, uh, it's owned by another government agency, the Scott County Community Development Agency. Now, the whole idea of this program has been to try and help struggling business owners and homeowners and, or business owners in commercial, uh, projects. This, this, uh, I don't believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, have we ever done a loan to, uh, Scott County CDA in the past for one, in this program?
Not under the exterior facade, no.
I think that's a precedence we really should discuss.
One thing to remember is that granted, I believe the city of Shakopee owns the land, the CDA owns the building, but the main floor of that building is occupied and has a master tenant who facilitates all the businesses that are inside there. So, I did look to see, on an annual basis, the entire lower floor of that building pays approximately $50,000 per year in taxes. So, they are tax-paying entities. That was one of the reasons that I decided to bring them forward to you, was because there are approximately 11 businesses in there that do pay taxes.
Any other questions of staff or discussion? Mr. Tabkey?
I don't feel this project meets the intent, um, of the program we put together.
Okay.
Neither do I.
All right.
Me neither.
Well, it looks like, uh, is there... Mr. Thompson, what's the, uh, proper course here? We don't make a motion and a negative.
Well, you can. A proper motion would be to, to deny the request for, uh, a, a, a loan.
Okay. Motion would be in order, Ms. Mokel.
I'll make a motion to deny the request of the commercial interior to the CDA.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mokel, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion of denying the request for the CDA? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 4C, consideration of commercial exterior improvement program loan for Bouya Properties LLC. Mr. DiMaggio?
Thank you. Bouya Properties is requesting a facade. They have a potential tenant that would like to move into their building that's currently vacant. The building has been vacant for approximately three mu, months. Um, it appears that Doggy Dews is looking to relocate their facility and to, and expand in this building. Prior to this, I believe the Crooks Brothers were operating in that building. Here's a picture of the building. It is on the First Avenue corridor. There's the building of the side and the parking lot when you drive into it. You can see the facade from the street. And again, another picture of the street-facing facade. They would like to use a product, and let me get it right, that is called con coat. In the picture, you can see that there is the windows and the bricks on the top, and then in between, there's almost a stucco-looking building. That is con coat. That is what they would like to do to the exterior of the building. It's my understanding that they would like to redo the front of the building with a new type of brick, and then the side of the building with con coat. They've requested $35,401.50. The committee is recommending $25,000. Part of the reason for their recommendation was because they felt that the front exterior of the building looked fine, and it didn't need any additional repairs. They did agree that the side of the structure could use some work, but they thought that the, the side that faces the street looked fine to them. Therefore, they did not go with the full amount. The lowest estimate was $70,803. The eligible expenses would be the roof replacement, and also the con coat and cultured stone application to the front of the building and the side of the building.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lewis?
I agree with the, uh, group on the front of the building looks fine. A good pressure washing that would change the color of that building, and it would give it somewhat of the historic look that a lot of people are looking for downtown, being that it is a limestone front.
Anyone else? Mr. Whiting?
This example, this picture you've shown, is that a rendering, or is that just another building that's...
This is just another building that has the con coat on it. Exactly.
Where exactly are they putting that on the building?
I believe it would go on the side of the building. You can see on the side where they have the, um, I believe it's just the cylinder blocks, so they would replace that with con coat. To make it look... Yep, to make it look like it has a texture to it. I'm assuming that would also help take care of any damage that there could be on the cylinder block. As I said, it's up to you if you would like to go with the full amount and have him also resurface the brick on the front. That is up to you. The review committee did make the lesser recommendation.
Mr. Whiting?
Just a comment. Uh, this is a part of town that, uh, we've looked at in the past to try and improve. I think, uh, um, this building does need some improvement, and, uh, I guess I would, uh, go with the recommendations, uh, of the, of the group.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to you, uh, let's see, recommend, uh, the amount of $25,000, and authorize the appropriate officials to enter in a repayment agreement with Bouya Properties LLC, 321 First Avenue West Shakopee. Has that enough of a motion?
There a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Motion passes four to one. Forty. Consideration of commercial exterior improvement program loan for Shakopee 126 First Avenue LLC. Mr. DiMaggio?
Thank you. This building is the preview, or the prior location that was the Eagle Pet Center. I have a potential person who's here this evening, Mr. Scott O'Brien. I'm hoping that, once I do my brief overview, that he'll be willing to come up and talk with you a little bit about his intentions. Attached are some pictures. I know how much you love my, my photography skills, so here's some pictures of what the pet center currently looks like. As you can see, there was a broken window, and I would like to publicly thank Mr. O'Brien for having that window repaired. That could have been a definite community hazard, so I appreciate him doing that. You can see there it was with a crack in it. This is a picture of the backside of the building. If you look closely on the top, you can actually see the windows are broken. So, I zoomed it in to make sure we got a good view, that you can see that the windows are broken on the top. The financing request is $105,000. The review committee reviewed it, and they recommend that you authorize the full $105,000. I went through the expenses that Mr. O'Brien bought in, brought in, and I felt that the ones that were actual, true eligible expenses added up to be approximately $223,700. Some of these did include cleanup of the building, some HVAC repair and some electrical repair. But unfortunately, I think that these all kind of go hand in hand with the work that you're doing to the exterior. If you don't clean out the inside, it does no good to put in new windows or to fix the front, so. Same with the electrical. I wanna make sure that everything is done right and everything is done one time. So, as you can see, the eligible expenses I wrote were the purchase and installation of new doors and windows, roof replacement, and structural repair. I have had numerous businesses inquire about that building. Unfortunately, due to the condition of it, I have not been able to bring anyone through it. So, at this point, I'm very excited to introduce Mr. Scott O'Brien.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Lewis?
You didn't wanna bring anybody through it, or you couldn't bring anybody through it?
You know, unfortunately, I think that this is a project that I am very glad that we have someone who's willing to take a look at it. We've had a lot of great, fun community events happen in the downtown this summer, and that building has been a concern of mine, so I'm very glad that we have someone here who's willing to take the initiative to look at it. So, now you got my two cents for what that's worth, probably two cents.
I guess I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the application, it, it says number of, uh, estimated length of vacancy, and it says 71 years.
I don't know if that was a typo of some sort or a misunderstanding.
Less than a year, maybe?
Or was that supposed to be the age?
Maybe it's saying less than a year?
Oh, maybe it's supposed to be less than a year. That might be it. Good call.
Yeah, less than a year.
That's a number, Mokel.
Yes.
All right.
All right, excellent. Thank you for the question, though.
Mr. O'Brien? You can critique his handwriting as well when he gets up there.
Do you still have that thing that you can zoom in on pictures?
Yeah, I sure do.
I brought a few.
Did I hit the right button? Yep, okay, and here's, all the spots are gone. It's right here. Do you put it right here?
Thank you.
And then there's zoom in and zoom out. Would you like me to stay nearby, or are you...
I think I...
Call me if you need anything else.
Yeah, thanks.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Counselors, uh, if, if I could, could I just give you a brief overview of some of the things that aren't, aren't on the application but are probably pertinent to, um, this specific building? Um, again, my name is Scott O'Brien and live here in Shakopee. I've basically lived in Shakopee my entire life, um, but for four years. Um, this building's been, uh, has, has operated as a pet store ever since I can remember. Um, since, it's been a pet store since mid-'70s. Mr. Edward Dresson, or Dresson, excuse me, who owns the building, had a couple of other miscellaneous uses in the back. I think he had some tanning beds in there at one time, so. He's been the primary occupant of the upstairs apartment since 1971. Um, and you, you might have seen in my narrative, uh, where I described the public improvements that, he's a graduate of Shakopee. And I, I thought it was important in my description of improvements, just to kind of give some of the history of how the building got to the point it's at right now. So, yes, sir?
Uh, if you could avoid some of the medical narrative?
Got it. For, for clarity's sake, I don't currently own the building. I have the building under contract, okay? I've been working with the family, um, and the representatives of Mr. Dresson to complete an orderly, um, transaction of the building. However, since I put the building under contract and began to do my due diligence into the condition of the building, I've discovered that the building is in far worse shape than I previously anticipated it being, and it, it, it really deteriorated over the, um, the winter and spring months, and then subsequently over the summer. So, in addition to the costs, uh, that Mrs. DiMaggio lined out, outlined for you, um, that are... that are eligible costs under the program, there are significant costs associated with bringing the building up to speed, and putting the building into any kind of a presentable condition. And those costs, not including the acquisition of the building, are roughly four-hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, as I look at it, the building needs significant cleanup. We don't know yet as to what asbestos, what sort of mold issues we have within the building. I took some additional pictures. It's a complete gut job. Ed didn't always call the city when he wired things. He didn't call the city when he put electrical, or HVAC things in there. Everything needs to come out of this building. Needs to be gutted down to the studs. All the plaster needs to be removed. All the joists need shoring. It, in order to preserve it, the facade needs extensive repair. The windows need to all be replaced. The brick needs to be replaced. The chimneys, which are still up there, some of which date back to eighteen-ninety, some are banded. The bands are falling off. One of the chimneys is tipped over onto Brian's roof now, Brian Turtle, the business next door. So, the building is rapidly just falling apart onto other buildings, and potentially in the front here, it's gonna, I mean, it could start falling onto the street. It's not as imperative, or it's not, timing-wise, that's not probably as close to happening as it is, because it has not been cared for on either side for a number of years. But this is just kind of, to give you an indication, all right, now I'm gonna need to zoom in there. I'm going, zoom in. Turn this around. This is that upstairs area. That Samantha zoomed in, or that Samantha zoomed in on. I'm not much better at photography than she is, unfortunately. But this sort of shows you the condition of part of the interior of the building. I'm just gonna kind of walk through these. This is another area in that upper exterior. So, as I stated in my write-up, Mr. Dresson hasn't lived there in over a year. And unfortunately, when he left, everything he owned stayed in there. And so everything that he owned has been essentially, well, rotting, I guess, for lack of a better term, for the last, this one's not very good. This is a picture of, the entire ceiling looks like this on both floors. So, everything is falling down into the building. All the fish tanks are full of water and debris that has fallen out of the ceiling, or office ceiling. There's, there's a, this is not uncommon. That's just mold. It's everywhere in that building. So it's just a giant incubator right now. I've had, some of the people in the room have been through the building, and you can only imagine what it smells like. I was in there today. It smells worse now in this back area particularly than, than it, I don't know why. I don't think anything got in there. I've never, I've never been attacked by anything in there yet, so... But that's always a concern when I go through there. So this is a picture looking forward toward, and I'm not kidding when I say that, First Street. You can see the condition of just the roof structures is falling in on itself. So we don't know at this point how rotted all those joists are that are holding that building up from, in the basement, because there is a basement in that area, and then in what's holding up that, that second floor. So here's a picture of, of some of the fine electrical work that Ed did on the property. I took the, there's only so much you can do when you have a property under contract with regard to due diligence. I can't start poking holes in the wall. I don't own the building. But I did, with the permission of the family, walk the fire department through the building, just so that they could get an idea of what's in there. Right now, fortunately, according to them, and having been through there, I would agree, there's no electrical service at the building. There's no water in the building, and there's no gas running into the building. So, internal combustion, I guess, would be, which is entirely possible, but that would be the greatest fire source. Or potential fire source, I guess. So, I guess in a nutshell, this is a project that, you know, I, I, it might be no secret to anybody on the council, but I'm looking at, at the potential of a couple of different buildings in Shakopee. We don't have a ton of blighted buildings, but, but we have a few. And, and to me, this is the worst one in town. I'm looking for the loan monies to help offset about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in costs that it's gonna take to get the building into a position where I can have it empty with new electrical up to code, new HVAC up to code. That doesn't contemplate sprinkling the building, which, depending on the new use, might end up being a requirement. And no, I don't have a tenant. Because I can't, I mean, what am I gonna show them? Can't bring them in there. So, in my opinion, this is what this program is for. I realize that it's a larger request than you see. However, in my opinion, I don't believe you're gonna see a lot of requests like this. Because, again, if an applicant puts up a request for a hundred, that means they're matching that hundred. That's a big number. Not to say that it's not gonna come up again, but, because there are other buildings in downtown that, that are in need of, of a fair amount of repair. I just happen to think this one is, it's the smelliest, and it's the biggest I saw right now. So, I would stand for some questions.
Well, I guess I'll lead off. The four-hundred-and-forty K figure for all the repairs, and not including items that you're not sure about, asbestos, things like that. So it could be higher than that. Do you know what the value of this property is?
To be fair, the four-hundred-and-forty, that's the all-in cost, as I look at this transaction, as an investor in a piece of real estate. That includes the acquisition of the property, and that includes a contingency of twenty-five thousand dollars in that four-forty. So, if you back, if you back that out, you're, you're looking at three-seventy. But no, the actual tax value of the property?
Yep.
Hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
So you're gonna put in substantially more than what this property's valued at?
I, I am.
And the contractual agreement, how does that work for our program? I don't know the answer to that question.
I would gather, I, who you?
My recommendation as staff to you would be that, depending on the amount of money that you offer, that you use the guideline that we just went through, to look at the term of it. So if, if Mr. O'Brien were to buy it and to sell it within a certain term, he could either then repay it, or come to you and ask to move it on to the next person, or whatever you would decide at the time.
I guess where I'm looking at it from is, one, is, is his contract long enough to meet that obligation? Because we don't know what your contract is with the family.
I thought that's where you were going with that question.
And, and the family is the owner of the property, so we would need their consent according to our policy. It would be the tenant and property owner.
I'm assuming that Mr. O'Brien would not enter into contract until he has actually purchased the building.
Correct.
So we wouldn't formally enter into contract with him until I have proof that he has actually purchased the building. And then we would not pay him until I have proof that he's actually expended the funds.
Okay. So that answers a couple of questions. Then the last question I have is, at what point do we put in more than what the property's worth into the building?
Exactly. So what I did ahead of time was I contacted our appraiser for Shakopee, and I asked him what he thought the value of the building would be, once it was rehabbed. And he told me between four-hundred and four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So I'll take that email that we get from the assessor. I will attach it to any application, and we'll make sure that we have verification. I would never recommend to you that you would put money into a building that would never come back at that value.
Okay, questions?
I just have a comment. I would like to thank him for taking this project on. It's something that's been sorely needed for quite a while. And the only problem I have is the fact that we can't give him the total amount he wants.
Any other questions or comments?
For what it's worth, you should really thank my wife, because she thinks I'm nuts. I said you should thank my wife, not me. She thinks I'm nuts.
Mr. Whitey?
I'll reserve that comment. I think this project fits exactly into the whole idea of this plan, and the historic nature of this building. I believe it's a hundred-and-twenty-five years old. Historic downtown. Goes right into our mission and goal of enhancing downtown. If we spent any money this year on this project, in this whole commercial exterior improvement program, this would be one that I would say would be the top, top one, so...
Kathy?
I would also like to thank you, Scott, for taking this on. I think it adds value to the downtown for this, just in this one building in itself.
Mr. Tabkey?
I didn't have my hand up. No, Scott knows that I love him.
All right. Mr. Luce?
I think the rest of the downtown businesses will thank him also. I think it's a project that's been sorely needed, and I think every one of them is gonna benefit from it.
Has the structural integrity of this building been checked?
Yes, but only to the extent that we could, having a due diligence period that allows us to...
So Pandora's box has not fully been opened yet?
Excuse me?
Pandora's box has not fully been opened yet?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Whitey?
One final comment. It, it does us, makes us feel a lot better about the project, seeing that some other downtown businesses are here, standing behind you on this project. Some people that have put a lot of time and money into their own businesses, and for what it's worth, I believe, they feel that it's worth it too. So, thank you.
I did think of a question, sorry.
Mr. Tabkey?
Yeah, there was something I was gonna ask earlier, but I forgot to. The upstairs is an enormous space. Is that, do you anticipate that being a single apartment, or broken into multiple apartments? Or what, what do you have in your head for what happens up there?
Yes. I, I need to research what it's gonna cost to run plumbing and make that into two separate apartments.
Okay.
That back has to probably come off. You know, that area that, it's basically a lean-to that Mr. Dresson added on to, it structurally, we can't fix it. So it's gotta come off. It's going to your place.
Okay, sure.
That would be a quid pro quo, so, we didn't hear that part.
Right, exactly. Nor would I ever accept it.
Oh, it's, it's a joke.
Any other discussion? Kathy?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, approve the commercial exterior improvement loan in the recommended amount of a hundred-and-five thousand to Shakopee 126th First Street LLC, 126th First Street Shakopee.
Your second? Second. Mr. Whitey, any discussion?
I just have one question.
Mr. Luce?
We previously set the cap at a hundred.
We did.
That's why I apologize for not being able to give them everything.
That was a guideline, so it's not necessarily a cap, it's a guideline of what you could use.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Is she interpreting that incorrectly, Mr. Thompson?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm a Mr. Chair, members of the EDA. I'd have to look at the exact wording, but like this first application you considered, but actually denied, this application, well, I guess it did predate this one. You have the authority to approve what you want. My suggestion would be, though, if you're gonna put a cap in it, it should be an eligibility. It should really be a cap. And then you can have discretion within it. But you have the, it's your program, you have the discretion. I understood the hundred thousand to be a cap, that you couldn't qualify for anything more than a hundred thousand. That's what I understood it to be. I'm not sure what the EDA understood.
Okay, what's the wishes of the EDA? We've got a motion and a second. My understanding is we have the authority to do a hundred and five.
Yes, my understanding, the motion on the floor is for the hundred and five, or is it for a hundred?
Hundred and five.
Okay. And my understanding from legal staff is that we have the authority to do a hundred and five.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's your program.
So we have a motion and a second for a hundred and five thousand. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Tabkey?
I would prefer to do the hundred, myself. I don't think five grand is gonna make or break the project. So I think that the applicant would be okay with that. I would like to stick with the hundred thousand dollar cap.
I can accept that.
Yeah.
Mr. Luce?
It's acceptable to the motion maker and the second for the amendment by Mr. Tabkey for a hundred thousand dollars, consistent with our policy.
Do you need a second on his?
No. No, the motion maker and the second are accepted it.
Okay.
I would rather go with the hundred, since we, I previously put that number out there, and it's somehow been latched on to, so I'd like to stay with that. Like you say, five thousand on this project's not gonna do him one bit of good.
Okay.
Tell his wife.
Well, as much as I would like that building to get rehabbed, in its historic fashion, on the front at least, I just disagree with government paying for it, and residential properties paying for it with inter-property taxes. It's unfortunate that the business community can't come together and help fund this project, which I feel is a better process. Unfortunately, that's not working. I would guess maybe the businesses don't have the liquid assets to help. And it's, you know, one could argue that their taxes are probably paying for the majority of that. If their taxes were lower, they might have money to help you, and then we wouldn't be doing it. But anyway, I digress. I appreciate you stepping up to do the project.
Thanks.
I just disagree with who's responsible for funding it. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October twenty-first would be in order.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Second by, motion by Tabkey, second by Mokel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose. Motion passes. We adjourn, back to the council.
All right, reconvene Shakopee City Council meeting, and Counselor Mokel.
I would like to make a motion for a ten-minute recess.
Second.
Second by Counselor Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are in recess for ten minutes.
John?
I can get it.
All right, we reconvene to the Chalk City Council meeting and are moving on to item number 10A1, approve a CUP for retail grocery store, PUD amendment to allow freestanding sign final plat of Southbridge Crossings, fourth addition. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you indicated, this is a threefold request. The graphic that's on the overhead shows you where the property is located on Southbridge Parkway and Old Carriage Court. You can see just off the page Red Oak School. A couple of background comments. This area is owned something called Planned Residential District, which was established in the 1999 under the code. It provides for a variety of uses. It's one of two areas in the city's own that way, but the caveat is if you're going to do retail in it, you need a CUP, hence the request for a conditional use permit. To have signage requires an amendment to the PUD. That's the second request in front of you, and I think you know already that at their last meeting, the planning commission reviewed those two requests. They took testimony from, I think, about eight residents of the city who came forward, one who was in favor of the proposed store, and seven who had their reservations about it. The last request is one for final plat. The planning commission does not review final plats. Only you do that. They did recommend with one dissenting vote at the planning commission, the approval of the CUP for the retail use. And again, the retail use is a proposed Aldi store of about 17,000 square feet. There are a couple of things in the resolution that I want to draw your attention to. One is a potential change, and I'll let Aldi address that if you have any questions for them. The first is that in the resolution, it is proposed after the planning commission review last week, under Roman numeral 21, that the applicant will submit a detailed traffic study to be approved by the city engineer before we issue a grading or building permit. So there was a slight modification to the condition that we had, but that's the condition before issuance of building permits or grading permits. The other condition that I draw your attention to relates to signage. And I thought I had made a note of that.
21.
21, thank you. Ah, yes, there it is. So the condition in your draft says the proposed illuminated freestanding sign shall meet the city code section 1170. The sign shall only be lit between the hours of 8:00 and 9:00 p.m. Aldi indicated those were their hours of operation. I think their desire is that you would consider a modification that allows the sign to be lit one hour before their store opening and one hour after they close. That way, if they would change their hours somewhat, they have some flexibility in that. They've also indicated that they're looking at reorienting the sign. I don't believe you need to deal with that this evening because another condition is that the sign permit is not approved with your approvals tonight. They need to get a separate sign permit, and our staff can work through the relocation or reorientation of that sign as a part of the sign permit. So with that, you've got a CUP, a PUD amendment to allow the signage, and a final plat in front of you to create two lots out of what is one platted lot. The planning commission has recommended approval of the first two, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Counselor Lehman.
So the first change of the traffic study is already in the resolution.
Correct.
And the item 21, the illuminated freestanding sign, is it your understanding it's 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
No, my understanding is that the applicant would like it to read one hour before store opening and one hour after store closing. That gives them some flexibility to adjust their hours of operation. What was in the resolution is what they indicated at planning commission are their current store hours, but they may consider changing those in the future.
Okay. And in the follow-up, Mayor, will they have signage on, are they allowed signage on the building also?
Yes, they will be allowed signage on the building.
Okay.
Further questions? Counselor Whiting.
Could you put up that graphic that shows the layout and, no, we're not talking about that sign ordinance, the one with the residential right across the street? The aerial view?
Sure.
My concern here is the townhomes that are facing, is that Southbridge Parkway right there?
To the south.
This is Southbridge Parkway. This is Old Carriage Court.
Old Carriage Court. They're facing Old Carriage Court, and the light wash that may come from either parking lot lights and the freestanding sign, has that been taken in consideration by the planning commission?
They did take a look at that, and there will be landscaping required specifically for headlight wash from their parking lot. That will be approved as a part of the building permit specifically. The planning commission did not recommend a specific landscape plan, and we know there are some changes from what we saw in the site plan. The site plan, which you have as part of your packet, generally indicates where that landscaping will be. And again, the orientation here is Southbridge Parkway, Old Carriage Court. You'll see they've already indicated some landscaping here across the front of, along Old Carriage Court, and also on Southbridge Parkway, so.
Mr. Leek, could you move it?
Yeah, I could do that.
Thank you, sir.
Since you can't see it. So they do propose landscaping. The specifics of the landscaping plan will be approved with the site plan when they come in for a building permit. But the code does require that they have screening that will screen to three feet height for headlight wash.
Counselor Whiting.
Now, you said divided into two lots, so this other lot here is a future, we don't know yet. Could be another commercial.
It is a future commercial use, but we don't know what that use would be. It's a slightly smaller lot. It's about 2.29 acres, I think. I believe this is about 2.78.
So we have the townhomes across the street, and we have the elementary school right next to it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Lehman.
Mr. Leek, looking at this drawing, is the main entrance an egress on Southbridge?
On Southbridge, it's a right in, right out. The full access is on Old Carriage Court and would be shared with the other lot created by this final plat.
Okay, so the lighting issue pretty much is confined to the exit on Old Carriage Court.
Correct, and presumably most of that traffic will be shown by the traffic study to be entering and exiting from Southbridge Parkway and not the other direction.
Okay. The school is quite a ways back in the cul-de-sac from this, so I don't think headlight wash is going to be an issue that far back. I'm going to reserve my questions for the applicant there.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Leek?
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant wish to address council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Andy Brandl with ISG. We are the consultant for Aldi. Here with me this evening is also the director of real estate, Andrew Mack with Aldi, as well as the property owner. I'd like to, I guess, the only thing I have to address, I'd like to thank city staff. We've gone through the conditions with them. We've worked with them on everything, and we are in agreeance with city staff on the amendment to the condition number 21. And we've also, their original condition was to look at sign orientation to make sure that, so that it's not perpendicular to the residential as well, and that is something we're working through with the applicant, and we think we might, we're going to go back to some change in orientation there. But as Mr. Leek mentioned, that's something we'd work through them with the sign permit. So we're certainly trying to be cognizant of that and work with city staff on getting that to be amenable to everybody. I guess other than that, I'd gladly answer any questions you have, and I can certainly defer to Aldi if they're specific to business.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, item 21, what is your store hours?
Current store hours are 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and then 10:00 to 6:00 on Sunday? 9:00 to 6:00 on Sunday, I'm sorry.
So illuminated sign, freestanding sign, you would be looking for a 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., an hour before and an hour after? Do I have that wrong?
We open at 9:00 a.m., so it'd be 8:00. But illumination during the day, we don't typically illuminate during the day unless, you know, conditions require it, so.
Okay, and then the latest at night, you'd want it illuminated?
No. After, an hour after closing, it shuts off. And actually, it's programmed into, at least for the Aldi lot, it's programmed into their lighting that an hour after, no later than an hour after store closed, their parking lot lights go off, as do their sign. The only lights that remain on are those on their building above exit doors.
So 8:00 to 9:00 on Monday through Friday, and what's the weekend hours?
9:00 to 6:00.
Would be 8:00 to 7:00.
7:00 p.m. is it?
You got it, on Sunday, yes.
He's telling me something different over there.
9:00 to 7:00.
9:00 to 7:00 on Sunday, I'm sorry.
So it'd be 8:00 to 8:00 is what the sign time would be.
Other questions? Counselor Whiting.
You had mentioned that you wanted it an hour before and an hour after for having that lighting and sign on, those lights. Is there any Aldi stores that are open later than the hours you specified? Do they go until midnight or like that?
Not currently. I mean, with the reason we discussed with city staff, having the set hours, the reason is right now there are no stores that go later than that, but we, you know, should that change to be at 9:00 p.m. closing, that's why we were looking at. We just didn't want to lock ourselves in on those hours. And then also considering the adjacent lot as well.
Further questions? Counselor Lehman.
Well, Mayor, I guess I got a question of staff now because I just heard the applicant say they don't want to lock themselves into hours, but I'm reading condition 21, and it's, I'm trying to figure out the hours for the illuminated sign. And by trying to figure out the hours, I came up with 8:00 to 9:00 Monday through Friday and 8:00 to 8:00 on weekends, but the applicant's saying they don't want to be locked into that, so I'm trying to.
It's 8:00 to 9:00 Monday through Saturday.
Do they then come back for a?
Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Lehman, my suggestion was, based on what they communicated to the project manager here, that the change would be that the condition be the lights not be on except one hour before their store opening and one hour after their store closing, and not specify the times. Because if we do specify the times and they want to change their hours of operation, let's say they go from being open from 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock, then they would need to seek an amended CUP. Not sure that that makes the most sense. So the proposed change is that they be allowed to have the lighting one hour before store opening, whatever day of the week it is. So if it's later on Sunday, it's one hour before that later start time, and then one hour after the store closes.
Why, is everybody concerned with this?
Well, I thought it was written right into it as what the times were going to be.
It had been, and that's why I suggested the change to one hour before and one hour after without specifying times.
Okay, very good.
My concern is if they did go to those late hours and those lights were on, because of that residential property, right next to the provoke, they have a little note on one of these maps of where that standing, freestanding sign will be, and it's pretty close to those townhomes. So I just didn't want to imagine.
So you don't want to?
Didn't want to imagine all that glare through the night, you know, if they stayed open until midnight because of their store patterns decided that that was going to be the best thing.
Okay. Further questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here. I also have a question for Mr. Leek. Pull the microphone back, sorry. With the, I know that at the planning commission, a big thing that folks were worried about with this building was aesthetics and fitting in with the character of the community. How does that, I mean, the building from the plan looks like it fits, but does it, I just want to confirm that that, in fact, is the case, and there's nothing that needs to be or we could require for aesthetics of the building?
Couple of introductory comments. Chalk City zoning code does contain provisions related to material standards for the commercial areas. We did, as a part of the CUP, review the elevations, which are now on the overhead. They do comply with the material standards. Now, the specifics will again be reviewed as part of the building permit to make sure that there are no changes that don't comply with those provisions. But we didn't see anything in terms of either the architectural design or the materials used that were not consistent with the standards in the zoning code. And again, you've got them in front of you.
And the building will be brick? I can't really tell from everything, is it?
I believe it's a combination of brick and block.
On the lower portion, correct?
Gentlemen? Combination of block in the lower portion, brick on the upper portion.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Helps me. All right, any further questions? All right, I will, let's see the way this one needs to go. Is it all just in one motion? Is that correct?
It's in one resolution, correct.
One resolution, okay. So entertain a resolution. Counselor Mokel.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 7479, a resolution approving a conditional use permit for retail grocery store, a planned unit development amendment to allow a freestanding sign, and final plat of Southbridge Crossing, fourth addition. Do I need to add this amendment for the hour before, hour after?
With the amendment presented by staff is.
Presented by staff.
Counselor Lehman.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Counselor Lehman.
What's the, what's the anticipated timeline of this store actually be up and running?
In the best case scenario, we hope to.
Sorry, since this is your first time, you got to say who you are and name all that kind of stuff.
As he's on his way up, if my recollection serves me, you indicated at the planning commission that you propose to be open late spring, summer next year.
Yes, if we can hit all of our timeframes, we'd hope to start in late October construction, do some winter construction, and open in the spring. If we, for some reason, miss that, we would start in the spring, open fall of next year.
And could you introduce yourself just for the record?
I'm Andrew Mack, the director of real estate for Aldi.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Mokel.
As long as you're up there, and I know that you also own Trader Joe's, can you put to bed why an Aldi's and not a Trader Joe's?
I have no affiliation with Trader Joe's. I work with Aldi.
But they're owned by the same company, correct?
I'm not sure of the complete, in the United States, we're separate ownership structures.
Counselor, maybe I can speak to that because I did some research. The indication that I've got from the business publications is that both Trader Joe's and Aldi's are companies that are owned by the same parent German company, although they operate independently.
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Item 10C1, County Highway 16 culvert repair and by two minutes rail repair cooperative agreement. Mr. Looney.
Let me make this real quick. This came about, it's yesterday, it's a repair from the flooding that occurred with the culvert on County Road 16 and the damage to the highway. It also did damage our trail in here. We've been working through the process with FEMA and emergency management people. County put together a project, the city and county project together so we can bid it together, and we can get it going. We're doing a rapid process now. The bids will be coming in, and I think the county board will be approving bids on September 30th so we can get this done yet this year. Our portion of the project is this trail, normal county cooperative agreement, where we pay for our city portion plus some engineering costs to go with that. Essentially, we'll be then taking that money in that account and going to FEMA to seek reimbursement. We're pretty sure we'll get reimbursement. That's the expectation, so any questions on that? We're trying to meet the county's deadline since we don't have another council meeting until October 7th.
Counselor Lehman.
Are they adding capacity to that drain underneath that road?
The culvert?
Yep.
Yes, it's a six-by-12 box culvert versus a 36-inch pipe.
Substantial capacity.
It's designed for the 100 years, so we upsized it.
Counselor Lehman.
I make a motion to authorize the appropriate city official to execute a cooperative agreement for reconstruction of the trail by County Road 16, foothill, trail.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So anybody, Counselor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, 10F1, 2015 proposed property tax levies and general fund budget. Ms. Lindahan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We've had several meetings on this topic, and what we are asking this evening is the action of the council on the preliminary levy. There's two items ahead of you, a resolution on the preliminary levy. As we've discussed, this is the maximum levy that the city council can approve. We've had a number of discussions from council members who've contacted city staff. This is the maximum levy. We have a lot of issues this year that have caused this levy to increase as it did. Capital outlay, downtown projects, coordination with other entities, issues related to personnel and transitions for new staffing. We can be pretty assured that the 10% maximum levy will not be your final levy. There are a number of things that we are still in discussion. Administrator McNeil, the HR issues that Ms. Wilson and Mr. McNeil and I are discussing, the issues relating to reduced insurance costs, the indications we're getting on early retirements. I do not anticipate your final levy in December being a 10%. But based on the level of discussions we've had over the past few months, with the dollar value of departmental requests, personnel requests, IT issues, downtown projects, capital infrastructure, as you see, this is a community that has some deferral. You're now doing some catch-up. I congratulate you for not kicking a can down the road, as proverbial line is, and dealing with these issues. And what's before you tonight is the Resolution 7480 that I am asking approval of the preliminary levies. That includes a general fund levy, three specific debt service levies. And then the next action I will request of you is the cancellation of the debt service levies that are not included. So that is the action before you, and we have outlined in the memo that was routed to you a number of the material items that has brought about the changes in this year's budget. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Counselor Lehman.
This one here's got 17, 7, 5 on it.
Right, and again, those are numbers that relate back to the fiscal disparities, the taxing from financing, and all the adjustments. And what we anticipate as the 16, 6, 1, 8 is your approved levy, preliminary, which will come back to you in December as a final levy.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Everybody jump at once, yeah.
Counselor Whiting.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2015 proposed property tax levies, Resolution Number 7480, and the preliminary general fund budget.
I'll second. So anybody, Counselor Luce? Any discussion? Counselor Lehman.
So if I got this right, the taxes portion is going from 15, 2 to 16, 6?
Correct, in the preliminary.
So 1.4 million increase.
Right.
In the preliminary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Counselor Lehman in dissent. Item 10F2, canceling debt service levies for the 2014-15 budget year.
Correct, again, as you've proceeded in the past few years, you have been reducing the cancellation of debt levies. What's before you tonight are the five debt service levies that we do cancel. Those are the remaining of the nine that are outstanding. We are working toward a process where each year, whatever is levied and whatever is bonded for, will be levied. You have, you had a number of discussions on the years when the debt service levies were issued and when they mature. As you can see, let me expand this just a little. You have a number of levies that in a very short period of time will be coming due. Your debt service environment in the city of Chalkapi is excellent. You are not carrying a high level of debt. You have a responsible repayment plan, and tonight before you is the request to pass the resolution that will cancel these specific debt levies based on the cash position and the ability to pay. That doesn't mean the city doesn't pay the debt service. We are simply canceling the levy option.
Pay with other options.
We pay with cash balance, we pay with assessment collections, you can pay with fund transfers, you can pay with, you know, in the glory days, interest earnings, but that's what we're requesting this evening.
That was going to be my question, is to explain to the non-finance directors as to what canceling debt means.
Correct, that is, that's a confusing concept.
It is. Counselor Lehman.
I'll offer Resolution 7481, canceling debt service levies for 2014-2015 as outlined in front of us in the resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So anybody, Counselor Mokel, any discussion? Counselor Lehman.
Example for the public, the 2004D Public Works debt payment at the time that that building was built and the debt was taken out, the council at that time decided that it would take the building rent for that building and apply it to the debt payments.
That's correct. That's a 20-year debt service payment. That's the longest debt the city has. This one is unusual, and it is fully paid by the internal service rent charges, correct.
So it gets paid every year is just where it's getting paid from?
Right, exactly.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as a reminder, there are numerous discussions we'll be having because this is a complicated budget year. This will be an interesting year as we address many of the issues, as you saw at tonight's meeting. You have a multitude of issues ahead of you, and there will be some policy decisions that will be needed. Thank you. I appreciate your efforts on this.
And we yours, Julie, and all of staff, so thank you. Other business?
Can't we just send her downstairs and tell her to start printing some money or something?
I can do it.
Print some money.
I can do it.
In other business, I just wanted to real quick recognize our police department public safety. Last week was, I think, a banner week for how police departments should and do handle themselves with the apprehension of Ty Hoffman. So I really appreciate the work the chief Tate and the police department have done with that, and just wanted to publicly recognize and other things going on. But just wanted to say thank you and great job to the department and how all aspects of that were handled, so that's it. Thank you.
I would like to add to that, thanks to the public for the tips.
Absolutely, exactly.
Eyes and ears, neighborhood watch.
Any other business? Counselor Lehman.
Motion to adjourn October 7th, 7:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So anybody, Counselor Mokel, and just so everybody knows, this will be a meeting, meeting, and not a workshop meeting because we've got a lot of stuff to get through during budget things, so it was a normal meeting. No further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.
I usually give this back to Mark so it doesn't get out.